We thank you for the things that we're getting ready to celebrate with the kids that are out in the hallway. And we just pray, Lord, that you would continue to bless our schools and our teachers and staff. And we thank you for all you do and your precious name to be a friend.
Thank you, Amy. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Jason, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in its heart.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for any public comments. I need a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So, sir.
All those in favor say aye. A motion for the approval of minutes.
Next motion.
All those in favor say aye. And, if I please me for the superintendent's report?
All right. Yes, we do have some recognition for celebrations tonight. So, our first group, I think, is out in the hall, but I wonder if they're all here or not, honey. Most of them are. I see somebody else coming in.
Miss Moin.
Miss Moin? His coach here, that's the main guy. Do a little recognition of the seventh grade boys' basketball team who just won the championship. And, so, we're glad y'all are here. Congratulations on a great season. I got you a, I didn't, I didn't, I don't know if you've got a copy of it or not, Jesse, but I did get you a
A copy of it.
newspaper article.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
So, you want to, let's get them where they can come across right here. I've got another particular order, but I'm just gonna call them out, so.
Just wait, right here, wait till you come.
So, we got Lance Chapman. Lance? Come on here, Lance. We'll line, we'll just line everybody up. Congratulations. Good job. You bet. Is Logan Spencer out there?
Quite whittily before.
Good job, Logan. Congratulations, man. There you go. Javier Carranza.
Quite whittily.
Congratulations, young man. You bet. There you go. Got Kristen Carrillo. Congratulations, Kristen. Nice job. We have Brayden Trith. It's Brayden. Are you a Pittsburgh fan? I'm sorry. Yeah, come on down there, I will go. Got Wesley Carpenter. Hello, Wesley Carpenter. There you go. Congratulations. Tyler? Got Zach Redd. Congratulations, Zach. We got Cole Brown. Gosh, is that the best sweatshirts you can wear, Cole? We got Evan Wood. Not here, okay. We got Parker Jones back there. There's Parker. Congratulations, sir. And is Connor? There's Connor, right there. Congratulations, Connor. I did see you back there, buddy. Good job. And, since we got Connor here, he was also named the outstanding MVP for the conference. So, congratulations. We got you another one for that, too. All right? Just, I want to say congratulations, young man. You guys did a great job and very proud of you. Keep up the good work. And Coach, anything you want to say?
Uh, yeah. At the beginning of the year, a lot of people asked me, you know, oh, you knew what group you were getting into? And I really, truly, I didn't. Um, I didn't do football, so I picked these guys up. I had no idea. Showed up to tryouts, kept looking at Clyde, and I said, hey, that, he's pretty, yeah, he's on your, yeah, he's on your team. And I knew that we had a lot of potential to be good. And I told these boys every day, don't, you know, everybody always tells them how good they are, but they've gotta show it. And, you know, started off the season on fire, didn't miss, scored sixty-some points, then we go get beat, which I think was very humbling for us. Got beat by Star Mountain, get hot, go on the road, start struggling a little bit. We lose to Central, lose to Star Mountain again. When we got seeded in the tournament, a lot of us wanted to be on the other side of the bracket, outside of those teams that we beat. And I told them, I said, guys, before we do this, I was saying, you can't ask for a better season. You finish on top, you beat the two teams that beat you, you win the championship. And they responded. And they're, yeah, I mean, great group of kids. I'm not following time from coaching, but I've coached for about nine years now, and this, this is a special group. If they stay together, they're gonna be, they're gonna hang up more than just one little banner down there. We'll do one next year, and then hopefully we'll, they'll bring something up to the high schools. Well, they're, they're a great team if they, we got a lot of the Duke fans on today.
That's why they're so good.
It's the only thing I picked and got.
That's why they're so good.
Get them away from us, the Duke. But, uh, they're, they're a great group, and they earned this, they, they did all this, and I couldn't be more proud of them. They're a fantastic bunch.
Congratulations, guys. Well job, well, well done job, and just keep working at it. That's all I can tell you. So, thank y'all for coming tonight. How we gonna get them all in there?
I think we can just crunch in a little bit.
Get anything with them.
Some of y'all get in front.
Yeah, someone come around here.
It works better.
Right there, see? Check out?
Uh, I think so.
I'm trying to get out of the way. You got it? All right. Thanks, guys. You want a weapon to stay if you want to, or you can leave. All right, so we got another recognition of a young man from the high school tonight that, uh, just competed in the truck driving competition. And we want to recognize him, Mr. Rutherford. Congratulations, Kevin Sigh, in second place, truck driving competition.
Tracker.
I mean, tracker. I said tracker, I thought he did the truck.
Where is he?
He won the, he won the track, so. Did we put the wrong thing on there? We did, see? I knew that. Sorry, we'll get a picture. Get one of them, Mr. Rutherford. Tell them about the competition.
So, uh, it's a state FFA competition. In order to be able to compete there, he, he won at our Federation Think Hound Conference meet, uh, back in November, and he was supposed to compete with the state. And there were thirty-two, thirty-four drivers there to state, and Kevin was second, which, uh, almost as good as his older brother's, he got first. I keep bringing that up, though. No, that's, that's awesome.
And it is awesome. It is awesome.
Second place in the state, uh, and, um, very well deserved. I knew that he had a really good shot at it before we went down there, and, um,
That's a little bit about what you had to do.
Not on the course.
That's all you got to do.
To, to give you an idea of what it is, it's, it's an obstacle course, pulling a trailer, and it's a lot of backing. Uh, you're backing down the alleyway, it's about fifty feet long, and you've got about six inches on each side. If you touch a cone, then it's, uh, it's points taken off. You gotta drive through. It's, it's just an obstacle course, and, um, it really, it is, uh, it takes a lot of skill to, uh, to get through it. And, uh, we've had three or four second placers, and, uh, Kevin is right there, one of the best that we've had, so. Did you win the hat, sir? Oh, did you win that hat? Hit my hat and a trophy.
Well, congratulations, Kevin. Let me get a picture with you. How about that?
That'll be good.
Yeah. You'll get in here with us?
No, I'll come.
All right. I think we got it.
Kevin, you wanna stick around for me? I would advise not. We'll get, uh, we'll get that fixed. Thank you. You'll leave that to one of them. So, I think next is Miss Roxanne Rotten. Come on up here, Roxanne. Are you gonna go up here and try everybody, so? No. So, I, I don't know, you, you know, Miss Roxanne Rotten, but she is our teacher at the high school. And, uh, this year, she is the NCA, NCCAT, CTT Teacher of the Year. Uh, it was developed to honor and retain excellent CTE, can you talk, CTE teachers and education leaders in North Carolina public schools and public charter schools. So, our teacher here is Roxanne Rotten. She's a health science teacher at Allegheny High School. And if you've never been up there, looking at her program, the kids love her, they love the program. It's been successful for a long time, and these teachers are extremely hard to find, just to be honest with you. And, uh, we're so glad you're with us, and we hope you stay quite a while, too, so.
Hard to find, hard to keep.
Yeah, hard to find, hard to keep. But, uh, anyway, uh, we appreciate what you do, and our kids do, too. But, and we wish you the best luck at the next level at NCAP, so I think you got a great chance at it. But just, congratulations, and thank you so much for what you do. So, there's a little, just a little something appreciation for us. You want a picture? Yeah, let me get a picture. Yeah, how about that? All right. Thanks, Roxanne. You can speak, Roxanne. I love you like dog.
And I will say, when I first started, I thought, two weeks, I was in tears. I thought, good Lord, what have I stepped myself into? I mean, I thought, oh, my gosh, it's such a big difference between being with our patients and then being with students. But really, when you take a look, you know, we teach our patients, and the big thing is caring for our patients and our students. And you know that, like, hand in hand.
You want to, I know you got a trick for the fair one of them. And next, I'm gonna turn over to two young ladies down here tonight, just gonna share a little bit about their CTE month. Presentation, so.
I'm just gonna let Daisy go first, and then I'll come.
Okay.
So, hey, guys.
Hey, Daisy.
Um, my name is Daisy Finley, and I'm the middle grades Career Development Coordinator, or CDC slash Careers Teacher. But I'm here to broadcast all the good things, which Daisy part for me is, it's all good. So, nothing to worry about here. Alrighty, so some updates. So, thanks to the partnership of Gera, um, last year, middle school, we kept the roads pretty hot. Um, we took sixth and eighth grade to Wilkes Community College to tour, which was huge because, because of parents, we haven't been able to do that in quite some time. Um, so these are some pictures, and I'm gonna take seventh grade to out. Um, the reason why we took eighth grade to Wilkes Community College, because number one, they missed it, the sixth graders. But number two, we purposely targeted those CTE pathways, which they're about to introduce, get introduced to at the high school level. Um, so Sparta eighth grade saw all the health sciences and glade and pines. They were able to see agriculture and construction. So, it was very, very successful trips, and again, thanks to Europe, we've been to lots of money traveling. Alrighty, we've had some awesome guest speakers as well. Um, so if you know my schedule, I'm at all three schools. So, we really, really appreciate guest speakers because they have to go to all three schools with me. Um, we had the credit union representative, a local artist, his name is Samuel Burr, and the Carolina Farm Table, um, which he owns a small business here, and then Tracy Taylor. So, the kids really enjoy him, especially at glade and pining, because they love agriculture. My guys are really invested in those guys. All right, so some industry and high school tours. So, right before Christmas break, um, eighth grade, they were able to tour tri-state components as well as Pioneer Eclipse, because their goal this year was to expose middle school students not only to colleges, but also local industries as well. Eighth grade, also, this was about, what, two weeks ago, we, we had the CTE showcase day. That's when all of the eighth graders are busted at the high school, and they actually get to take a tour of CTE classes. Uh, so this is really helpful, especially because it's right before scheduling, so they can kind of see, maybe get a little bit of an idea of what health science might look like, or, um, construction might look like. Plus, you know, for some of these kids, this is the first time they've been inside the high school. Um, so again, just trying to get them exposed to what's coming up very quickly. It's all about the clubs. So, Mr. Jones, Mr. Danny Jones, um, he has started not one, but three clubs at the middle school level. Um, he has TSA, he also has radio club and run club. So, with TSA, um, they have not heard anything yet, but their first competition was this past Friday, and it was virtually. So, we're expecting him, we're expecting to hear the results here soon, to see how they place, and then hopefully go on to state.
Now, what's TSA do?
TSA, that is the technology, it's like a technology type club.
Top, Technology Skills Association.
So, it's really focused on STEM, or Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. So, what's coming up? Um, for me, definitely more guest speakers, um, the Career Fair, which is in about a month, um, and Career slash Summer Job Fair, which me and Miss Russell are tag teaming that. Um, STEM and Literacy Nights, so all three schools will have those nights in March or April. Um, industry visits for our sixth and seventh grade, that's coming up in April. And then, my last big event of the year will hopefully be a downtown walking tour, um, for our eighth graders, because, you know, a lot of them don't really know what downtown has to offer, can even name three stores downtown. Um, so again, as you know, it being, um, in Allegheny County, we have lots of entrepreneur work, and we have a career structure that's a very common career path, whether it's full-time or part-time. So, that's about all we're up. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Dana Russell. I am the CMC up at the high school. Um, this month has been hashtag CTE month. The month of February, we always celebrate everything CTE. And as you can see, I have a few pictures. We have celebrated so far a lot of our CTE students. Each month, we pick a few of our students to be CTE, uh, Students of the Month, and those are chosen by their teachers, and we celebrate them, and we tell all about the great things that they do in CTE and what they, and what CTE has done for them. We've also, um, this year, um, celebrated National Agriculture Day. Uh, agriculture is a big part of Allegheny County. We celebrated both of our great ag teachers, Bill and, uh, Bill Hashin and Jamie Vestal. Um, we also, this year, have, um, started our Electrical Trades Pathway, which, uh, Mr. Gary Finney is, um, over that, and it has been a great success. We've had lots of students, and actually, will have four students, you know, hopefully, by the end of this semester, complete the Electrical Trades Pathway. They ta, they have taken Electrical Trades, they've taken Core and Construction, Electrical Trades One, and Electrical Trades Two. So, I, I think that's a big accomplishment, especially in its first year, to have that many students to pass, uh, through, or go through the program and pass, um, the concentrator courses for the Electrical Trades. So, we're real excited about that. You'll go to the next slide. Um, we have a lot of great things happening at the high school level. We have a lot of credentialing, uh, going on. We have credentials in Health Science, we have credentials in Adobe, we have Photoshop and Premiere Pro, and as well as Illustrator. Uh, Ms. Rotten, who just left, and she is our CTE Teacher of the Year. She does CPR, uh, the OSHA Health Science, Health Sciences Certification, as well as Stop the Bleed. So, those are three certifications that our students get in the Health Science field. We have the NCCER certification for both Construction, um, Construction Core, and Carpentry and Electrical Trades. And we have several students who have passed all of their NCCER certifications and modules to get that certification, um, this year. We've got the OSHA, uh, certification for Construction, the OSHA 10 that they have also passed in Construction Core. So, that's both for Electrical and for Carpentry.
Excuse me, do they graduate OSHA 10 level?
Yes, they do.
Yes.
You know, I say lawyers.
Yeah, a lot of money.
When they can put that car there.
Yeah, that's a big deal.
That's also offered in agriculture, but we're not doing that yet, but hopefully in the future, we can, um, offer that in the Agricultural Trade, too. Um, in Ag, we also have our Welding Certifications. A lot of the kids go through our welding program, and then they go on to the college and get more certifications through our partnership with WCC. Um, in our Animal Science Program, we have the BQA Certification, which is the Beef Quality Assurance Certification, which the students can get, um, as well as Food Handler and, uh, our Serve Safe Food Manager, uh, certifications that we get in our Foods, um, Pathway. So, that's been a biggie. And Mr. Carpenter's Auto Service, uh, Program, we are able to give our students the SP2 Pollution and Safety Certifications that they can take with them. And then hopefully, they will continue on through that pathway, and then take the first level auto services that he teaches through Wilkes Community College. So, a lot of our kids go through that whole program, and they, they love it. Um, we have eleven pathways at the high school currently, and hopefully, you know, um, next year, we are also looking at, um, in, um, putting in the Hospitality and Tourism, um, Pathway, which would, which would be great for this county, considering, you know, how our, the direction our county's going in. So, we're real excited about that. Um, Advanced Studies, we have a lot of students who are in Advanced Studies courses. Those courses are, after a student completes a pathway, they can either take a career internship, which is what I do at the high school, I'm a CDC, so they take a career internship where they go and they work at a job out there. Right now, believe it or not, and, and Ms. Rotten's not here now, but my biggest, I have twenty-two kids in career internship this semester, that's a lot of kids. Most of my career internship students are in the Health Science field, and it's all because of our Health Science teacher. And, um, this year, it's the first year since COVID that we were able to get back into the hospital. So, I am so happy. We have six kids over there, seven, actually. We have seven kids over there right now, going through, um, different aspects of the Health Science field at the hospital now interning. So, I'm very excited with that. We have a student who is at, um, Sparta School, who is interning with our school nurse. And I have one at the landings of Chestnut Grove. She is actually working there and is amazing. So, um, we have students in doing that, and they also can do a career, uh, advanced career studies, which means that they are in with the teacher for their pathway, and they, um, take it just a little bit further. It's almost like, if you all remember the, uh, old senior projects, if you can remember that, they go into that pathway and they broaden it, and they do a project, they do, um, a presentation with, to the industry folks that are involved in the advisory committees for those pathways, and then they also, um, do a research paper, and then if they get honors credit, they have to do a service project or service piece that goes along with that, or they can do a work, um, job shadowing piece that goes with it. So, a lot of those kids, they, I mean, in the past, we've had, um, uh, one of our kids built a cattle chute. I mean, actually welded the entire thing. So, you know, we, we've got a lot of really good students who are, you know, taking it one step further, just to explore that field that they want to go into. So, our Advanced Studies courses are big. We've actually upped that. We, we probably have, by the end of this year, we'll probably have at least twelve kids who've gone through Advanced Studies in one of the pathways. So, that's, that's big. Um, our new pathway I just talked about was our Electrical Trades this year, and he is doing a fabulous job. The kids really seem to like that, and we are so excited because, as you all know, that's one of those industries that we need to get people involved in. A lot of our, um, people who are in the county that's doing Electrical Trades are at that age, where they're thinking about retirement. So, we need to get some new, fresh people in that field. Um, FFA winners, you just saw Kevin, he, we've got lots of kids who are doing lots of things with FFA, and this is FFA Week. So, I'm very excited that our kids are placing at the state level for our FFA, because that's amazing. As big as agriculture is here, you, but you think about it, we're a small school versus all these bigger schools, and our, our kids are placing. So, we're proud of them. Um, another thing I want to talk about is our concentrators. This year's senior class, believe it or not, if you were a CTE concentrator, that means that you have finished your pathway. That means you have taken at least two, sometimes three courses in one pathway to, to be a completer or a concentrator in that pathway. And this year, we have ninety percent of our students who have completed some pathway in CTE. So, that's pretty amazing, and I also want to tell you, now tomorrow, we are finishing up the, um, NRCRC Work Keys, uh, credential, uh, testing. It's the Work Keys ACT, Work Keys Testing. That is a big part of school's accountability piece. We have ninety percent of our, um, senior population gonna take that test, and tomorrow's the next day for testing. But as of right now, we have ten platinum, fifteen gold, nineteen silver, and twenty bronze certifications in this senior class. So, if we have some additional, uh, levels scored, uh, it could be possibly the best year we've had for our ACT Work Keys Testing this year for, um, in a long time. So, I'm real excited about that. Um, also, um, CTE Students of the Month, um, we really need to, and, and I'm really big on making sure that our, our CTE students are recognized for all the accomplishments that they, um, make throughout the year. We have a lot of really good students, and I send kids out there to work that, you know, I think are amazing. And, uh, I send people, I see Kate over there. I send, uh, our AAVC students to her, and they come back with, with so many great opportunities, and not just that, but some of them can freelance and get money doing freelancing through our Adobe Academy, um, programming, which, uh, Ms. Tammy Carrier, uh, teaches at the high school. It's amazing what our kids are doing, and I think we need to celebrate it every day, because our CTE students are the workforce of the future. So, with that being said, yay for CTE Month. That's what we're doing at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you.
And it is CTE Month, and we have great staff, most of the central brag on these two ladies, um, they are tireless work.
Oh, I need to say one more thing.
They do a whole lot for the whole district, and I just, I hate them as well, which I'll do.
And I want to say one more thing about Ms. Rotten. Um, she is getting ready to have the blood drive, so anybody that wants to give blood, she does that every semester with her students, and the blood drive is gonna be March first. So, anybody who wants to come to the high school and donate blood on March first, we'll see you later.
Sure.
I'll be there, too.
They are excellent. I appreciate you guys. Yeah, thank y'all for all you do, because that, and Mr. Rutherford's right, they work tirelessly, all the time, they really do. But you can see what's going on with our CTE program. Somebody's gotta be driving that, and these, these two ladies really drive that, so thank y'all. Thank y'all for. Somebody's got to be driving that and these, these two ladies really drive that, so thank y'all, thank y'all for presenting to us tonight. Uh, last thing on my report is graduation and promotion dates. Uh, as of right now, we, uh, we met, um, a few, few, a couple of weeks ago, but our, our last day of school is May twenty-third right now. If, uh, we don't get any more weather, um, so we'd like to set the graduation date, I know it's, we're at that point where the folks who fix our diplomas need, need our orders. So, uh, can we set graduation for May the nineteenth? And, um, eighth grade promotion, we're going to do the day before, like we did before out on the high school, uh, stadium and, and do all three promotions on the eighteenth. Probably, I, I don't have the exact schedule, we'll probably start off with Sparta that morning around nine. Uh, glade would probably be roughly around ten-thirty or eleven, depending on how, how long Sparta is, what does that see? And then, um, Piney Creek will be that afternoon. But we'll get those dates, uh, planned writing and, uh, and go from there, I mean, you, I, you guys will pay for that and they're gonna work.
And you're assuming no more snow days, right?
Well, I mean, we could, we could, you know, that's, we could, but I mean, we got, we've got days in there, so, uh, but the problem is, we gotta get the exams done. And, uh, and they're often the last five days of the school year, so, um, we should be okay, I'll just put it that way. We should be, if, if, if not, we can make an adjustment, you know, but, uh, the problem is, you have to order diplomas. And you can't wait until a couple of weeks before graduation or diplomas, those, those companies, uh, I really, really want it before now, but, uh, since I'm there with me, I told them, we, we'll give them a, a time by the end of the day, so. So, we'll get those dates set and get that information out, please Sharon. And that's all I have, Ms. Ray, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, I've got dates for board training, what do you have in mind for that?
Alright, so, um, it's been hard to get everybody on board, not, not on board, we want to have, uh, but it's, it's hard to get a date. So, Mr. Booth, we want to know, instead of doing Saturday, because we do it during a weeknight. So, would you guys be okay with a weeknight? Does that work better for you?
Well, no, I, six of one, half a dozen for, for me, I just think it's difficult to find the Saturday.
Okay.
That we're all going to be available.
Gotcha.
I mean, um, I, I just think weeknights would seem to work better for some and maybe not others, I don't, I don't like speaking for anybody else, just a recommendation.
I'm good anytime, whatever we're working on, I'm just.
So, I, I contacted Ally to do the training and she, you know, I, I gave her those two Saturday dates, she was good on both of those. But, um, so last one on the top tonight before we said, is, is, is there a night of the week that works better? I mean, I don't think Friday night's a good night, Wednesday night's church night, so, you know, uh, sports getting ready to start and most of their games are on Tuesdays and Fridays, so maybe a Monday, let me, can I like, um, let me pull a couple of dates. Send them, I'll get Sharon to send those dates to you guys and I'll send them to Ally and we'll make a decision from there, would I be okay?
Could you incorporate it with a meeting, with like our next meeting or you wouldn't want to?
I mean, but, you know, you, you gotta remember you're going, that's about three, it's gonna be about three, three and a half hours long, but.
Okay, that's not long.
Yeah, that, that training is, so.
Okay.
We'll give it a week to itself special.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing, so, uh, let me, let me, let me get some dates.
That's fine, yeah.
Uh, the sooner the better though, so, um, I'm just, let me see where we're at. Yeah.
We're in March, basically.
We have pretty much, I mean, we do have the, uh.
Twenty-seventh.
We do have the twenty-seventh there, um, and, um, I'm gonna pull up a calendar here real quick where I can see it face to face. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm talking about my calendar. So, that March the sixth, that Monday, that's not a good date? I'm, we'll pull a couple of dates, so we've got March sixth, March thirteenth, that's the day for the board meeting, I don't know if y'all want to meet back to back. Or we could do, we could look at, uh, March twentieth.
It doesn't matter to me.
Okay, alright, so, I, let's contact Ally tomorrow, see if she can do the sixth or the twentieth. Six o'clock, you want to start at five-thirty, six o'clock, five o'clock?
I, I make those rare exceptions, whenever the rest of the group can get here, I'll get here.
Well, we could, we could, we could, we could start at five-thirty and then, um.
Four-thirty, I mean, if it legitimately is three hours, let's, let's.
We, we'll have some food, so we can, we can work, we can work through the meeting, but.
Yeah.
Probably, it'd probably be better about five-thirty, we look at five, five, I've got a check with Ally, see what, see when she can get here too, that's, that's another thing. So, I mean, she's a working, she's a working attorney, so.
Understand why that would work better for her.